Having arrived at the specified time and hour called meeting of the planning board together. Today is Thursday, September 12, 2024.
I cannot view. Okay.
How's that?
That's much better. Thank you.
Okay, this meeting is Zoom meeting also. Meeting ID is 832-6995-5913. Passcode is 211174. And I have the phone number. It's 1-929-205-6099. First item on the agenda is the meeting minutes.
You want to read that?
Oh, yeah. Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. Note, this meeting is being recorded for live broadcast televised by the Boeing TV. If anybody is audio or visually recording, please acknowledge it this time. Seeing no hands. Okay, now we'll move on. Meeting minutes from August 22, 24. If you notice there, quite lengthy.
Mr. Chairman, having reviewed the minute, I believe they accurately reflect the meeting from August 22nd.
Second.
Make a motion to accept.
Second by Doc. Okay, would be a roll call vote. Corinne?
Yes.
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 Yes. Liz?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, we have a request for lot release, number one at 953 County Road, Pedison Terrace. Where's that?
Yes, we have that.
Okay, go ahead, Jen.
Okay, this is just a re-release of lot number one. And so I did find the original release in our files, so it's simply a re-release.
I'll make a motion that we.
I just want to take a look at where it is. What's the number?
It's way down on County Road, just before Long Hill Road.
Oh, 953 County Road.
Yep, and it's, Pedison Drive is just a cul-de-sac that goes in. And lot number one was out on facing County Road as well as Pedison Lane. And it's owned by Pedisons.
So it's, the house is here, and then it's this lot right here.
What size is that? Does it say 40,000?
It has conformed, but I think.
Oh, okay. Okay. I just want.
I think originally this owner was going to keep it and dissolve that. He decided not to.
How's that with that, Corinne?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if there was going to be a contiguous problem, whatever, but they're conforming lots.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we release the lot as requested, lot number one, 953 County Road.
I second the motion.
Any roll call vote? Corinne?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Liz?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, application for site plan review, special permit number 04-2024. 328 Main Street, MAP 20.3, parcel 135. The application is to construct a seven-unit residential development, and this has been continued from August 22nd.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the boards for the record. My name is Hal Chuba. I'm a consulting engineer with offices at 112 State Road in Donovan, Massachusetts. And I do represent the applicant on this site plan review special permit application. Just to give you the background of the property, probably some of you seen me back in 2019, I believe. We started this, the permitting of the property to the west. This since when Ms. Moore was still the town planner at that time. And the applicant owns the parcel right to the west of the parcel that we're here for tonight. That's 340 Main Street. Back in 2019, we started the process. Phase one was to construct a gasoline station fronting the Main Street portion of the lot with some residential, six units on the second floor. It was a mixed use. That was approved back, the special permit was approved back in 2020. It was COVID. We did go through the construction through COVID and two years after the place is completed. It's, right now, it's fully occupied and under its operating. Phase two was back in 2022, I believe. We came here for a special permit to construct 2012 duplex units. Each one, each building has two townhouse-style units, total of 24. And I believe you, this board, did approve the site plan application back in July of 2023. Since my client or the applicant had the opportunity to acquire the property to the west, which most of you know it was in the market for a while, and I think for probably someone other than my client, didn't really make a lot of sense to buy that piece. So I got the call back in probably last December that, you know, I have the property. What do we do? So back to the drawing boards, we looked at the zoning bylaws. If you don't mind, Jen, if you can put probably like sheet number four, the site plan, I believe, the site plan layout. No, I'm sorry, site layout, sheet number six. So the property is about 20,000 square feet, and it's an R-shaped property. It's kind of like a pie shape with frontage on Main Street. It's the, excuse me. This is the property in question, or the property that we're here for tonight, this piece. You can see it has frontage on Main Street, about probably around, I would say, 400 feet on Main Street, and not much of a depth. So it is in the downtown Gateway District. Really hard to develop as a commercial property or retail. We looked at this. And then having the four acres to the east, we thought it would be an opportunity to kind of use the two properties together with the shared driveway or some kind of, you know, so we have some room for parking and landscape and improve on the entire layout. We, I contacted Jen at that time, and I requested an informal meeting with all the department heads or, you know, for the town to see what we can do. At that time, I had a different layout. I had a layout for seven units, but it was a one-way in, one-way out, kind of using, with two driveways off of Main Street. One driveway coming in this way and one driveway coming out. And they had, you know, there was concerns about the proximity of the driveway to the Bourne Circle and to the pedestrian crossing here that you see that was recently constructed by Mass DOT. So I went back and I did change the design. I moved the driveway about 450 feet away from the circle, and I made it a two-way traffic. Now, Jen, if you don't mind, if we can zoom on the entire sheet so I can just show the board why, the reason behind this. Because if you recall, when we came back, when we came last time to 340 rear, there was a concern about the traffic pattern.
Hold on one second.
Yes.
John?
Can you put your microphone over closer to him when he's parking?
So there was a concern about the traffic pattern that the board didn't feel comfortable of people leaving the back residential development using the gas station parking. And at that time, I think there was a condition that this would be a one-way in and one-way out. With this layout, now we have an opportunity for the residents in the back to use this common driveway that would be used for residential. Probably this would be mostly for residential, because if you're going to the gas station, you're not going to go through the parking lot. You would just use the driveways on the east. So this way, you have an opportunity to go to the back and then leave this way. Also, we were able to accommodate some more parking for the seven residential units to the west. I did provide the parking data on the site, so we are, we have approximately, if you take the entire, all the uses that are on the sites combined, we need 100 and, we need, required to have 107 parking spaces. And we are providing 146 parking spaces. So we do have the required parking spaces and we have extra. I know the parking was an issue at the last meeting with all the meetings, basically. Also, meanwhile, we did go through the design review committee, and Mr. Connor's here tonight. And I know, I remember he had a couple of questions, a couple of concerns at that time, and it had to do with the landscape along the westerly side of the retaining wall and the height of the sign too, the height of the proposed sign. So we did, we can go back, we'll go to the landscape plan just after we're finished with the site plan, but we did address those two comments. So we had the DRC approval back in April of 2024. We also have the sewer allocation that was approved back in March 2024. And as I mentioned, this is really like the working effort between my office and the planning board and the different boards of different departments of the fire department, DPW, conservation. The property is in the flood zone, so we know we have to fight with conservation. But, you know, that would be our next step, you know. The first step was to get the design review committee approval, get the sewer allocation. Come here for the special permit. If we're approved tonight, our next step would be to go for conservation. The lighting would comply with the town, with all these zoning bylaws. I submitted the photometric on the lighting plan. The sidewalks all around the site to make sure that pedestrian can move freely from the parking lot into this, the units, and from the units to the parking lot. We did add the landscape. Now, we can go to.
Sheet nine.
Sheet nine, I believe you're right. Sheet nine is the landscape, yes. We provided the row, in addition to all the trees and the shrubs, we provided a row of abovadi on that side, because that will provide the buffer during the screening during the winter time. And as I mentioned before, this, all this land is owned by the US government. It's part of the Bourne Bridge right-of-way, so it's not really to be developed in the future. But we understand in the winter time, you might lose a lot of the coverage with the leaves. So we are providing the additional landscape that we, that you have requested during the meeting. And also, I did revise the height of the sign not to exceed six feet from the, I think those are the two comments from at that time. Drainage, again, similar to the previous two projects, all the runoff will be collected by a closed drainage, by a closed drainage system, treated and infiltrated on-site. The site is all sandy. I'm sure you've, you know what it's like during the construction. It's all sand, pure sand. The, and it will be in compliance with Mass DEP standard, stormwater standard requirements. So lighting, stormwater, landscape, parking, all in compliance. The, I did submit also a traffic impact analysis, just to look at the whole project. And I compared the increase of the seven units to what was approved before between the gas station, the residential units, and the retail and the 24 units in the back. The increase is about 2%, so really it's not the increase of traffic. It's not going to change any traffic. It's not changing the level of service or any traffic impact on Route 6, Main Street. The. I believe this is it for me as far as the project, but I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any more, Doc?
Would you just clarify the two-way circulation? Is it two-way up to the upper residential and at the far east? Does it become one-way down? Will you just talk about the two-way circulation to the upper residential area?
I will. So before, it was only one-way in, one-way out, so you have to get up through the. So now you have the option to still get out from the back, but also you can, you can go up and come down and westerly.
You can enter from the east side?
No, you can't enter.
It's one-way. It's one-way out on the east side.
Yes, one-way out, correct.
That's the, that's the question.
That's staying this way. And if this board approves this tonight, I think we might have to modify, because there was a condition on the other permit, special permit 13-2019A that says the circulation has to be one-way and something like that. But either we can do that, or maybe we can over the way, whatever the board would like.
Definitely have to be modified.
I think the two-way circulation works in the upper residential area. Just the east exit, you'd like that to stay one-way.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's only, you can't enter from the east side, yes. But you can, now you can go back and exit from the westerly driveway, which is here. So if we go back, Jen, to the, this is going to be a new driveway, so that's going to be, again, this is Mass DOT. So, you know, even though if this board approves it, we still have to go back to Mass DOT to get the curb cut on that side.
Are you keeping the curb cut in front of the pumps, between the pumps and Main Street?
Yes, those are remaining.
Dumpster for the new seven units?
Yeah, the dumpsters are shown. There's three, four dumpsters on this side, five dumpsters, actually.
Okay, so those residents will have to bring their trash from those seven up to there?
Correct.
Is there a handicap spot close to the seven dwelling units?
There should be, yeah. Actually, I'll make that revision, because the units are not handicapped accessible, but we'll provide, I agree.
I think there should be at least one spot closer to, up to there, so.
Absolutely. We'll provide that.
Anybody else?
I have a couple of questions. I'm just trying to, this is the first time I've seen, so. So what, actually, you have three curb cuts that are going to this project. You have this new one that is in, in, and out. Then in the middle one is just an in, and then the other one is, the last one is just an out.
Correct. So these two are existing right now.
Okay, those exist today.
Yeah, yeah.
The only concern I guess I have is the new driveway. I don't know what the distance is from Main Street to the entrance into the units. If someone was to come in there, stop to think, oh, where am I going? The next person that comes in is going to be like a bumper car, because are they, how, what's that distance? Is there queuing?
This distance here?
Yeah.
Okay. Actually, I have a plan with the scale I can show you, so I don't, I guess, there's probably 60 feet.
You know, if there's enough room for two cars, then I think it'll be okay. I'm just concerned about the queuing, and someone's trying to go into the development and then change their mind, and then somebody's coming down the hill and going out. It seems like there's a conflict.
60 feet.
Yes, 60 feet, okay.
I just feel like people who live in the seven-unit section there will want to peel right out of that curb cut as opposed to driving through.
Well, that's why it's two-way, right?
Is it two-way right there?
Yeah, there's nothing preventing.
The driveway will be a two-way. Able to go straight out to scenic highway.
Okay, sweet.
It's two-way, but it's right turn and right turn out, so.
Okay.
Because it's a divided highway on this.
All right, I'm blind.
Hey, you know, it's kind of hard to see everything.
I went right up to it. I couldn't see the arrows.
Anybody else? Any other questions or comments from the board members, from the audience, both of you, nothing?
When is this projected to be finished?
Started.
Well, I mean, the next part, the next phase.
Well, they haven't even started up on the hill yet.
I know. I look at it. I look down.
Very soon.
I guess more, I mean, when are you guys going to start the next phase, like the one that's up on the hill?
Very soon. The reason we didn't, because I, actually, I forgot to mention that we are upgrading the sewer line. That's why that was the holdup, because when we added the seven units, we looked at the sewer and there's a one and a quarter inch force main on that line that we're going to replace with the two-and-a-half-inch force main. So we had to do both at the same time. We figured, you know, because if we don't get approval on this one, but, and we were ready to start on the other one, actually. Start at least the.
The force main is out in the roadway.
It's, it's in the, kind of, it's in the sidewalk area, yeah.
Yeah, I just been, I had been wondering, because I remember this coming up. And when I go over the bridge, I'm like, where is it? When is it starting? Like, the first part's there, not the second part.
How many affordables are in here?
It's.
Ten, what is it?
10%.
10%.
Well, yeah, there's, there's six apartments above the mixed commercial space, and then there's 24 in the back, so it's 30, so it's 10%.
It'll be three.
Three.
Plus now you're adding seven.
Plus a seven.
It's one above the commercial component and then two in the back, two in the rear. But I think it's flexible. It could be three in the rear.
Now, are there going to be two signs? Because you have a sign way on the.
Yes, yes. They'll be different, yeah. One is the bayview and the, I have it on the detail. One of the detail sheets. It might be easier to, but I have it here. So it's bridge view apartments and I think bridge view townhouses. On the older one, I'm not sure.
Do you want me to?
I mean, the design review already looked at this, right?
Yes.
So are there two signs, two different?
I'd have to look at the record.
Because it looks like there's one down where the new townhouses are, and then there's an existing one on the other end. That's the gas station sign.
Yes, but, so it's, 328 is a separate property than 340. So will be one sign on 328. And will be one sign, will be two signs for 340. The one on Route 6 for the gas station and the retail, and will be another sign in the back for the townhouses. And both of those signs were approved by the design review committee.
Can you go back another slide, Corinne? I mean, sorry, Jen? More the design, yeah. So is that, is that basically the design of what you're looking to put in the seven units?
Yes, yes. I do have a rendering, probably the last sheet, Jen.
In the last, yeah.
Might show, you know, it's got all the elevations on, you know, the one before, yes, yes, thank you. So we jogged the buildings, because we didn't want it to look like just one straight building with the roof lined and, you know.
Are these all rentals, or are they ownership, or what, what's the?
I think, I think rentals, yeah.
All of them are rentals?
Or just the seven? The seven, or the ones up on the hill too?
Rental.
All rental, okay.
So will there be a management company?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
It better be. You can't rent in this state without having a management company.
That's right, that's why.
It's, absolutely. It was in the rentals before, and it's a mess. Tenants have all the rights and the landlord doesn't have any, so. Anybody else? Any other questions from the board?
Just a quick one. I'm sorry if this is dumb. How many, what's the biggest rental, like how many bedrooms?
They're all two bedrooms.
They're all two? Okay, thank you.
Actually, the living, we have the floor layout. The living space is on the first floor, and the two bedrooms with the bathroom on the second floor.
Cool. Looks nice.
I'm renting from the bank. It's called a mortgage. So you proved all the colors and everything. They're pretty much.
We like the project.
Good. Anybody else? No other questions, comments?
They have hoopla's.
Yes, it does have hooplas.
Escape pod.
Okay. Liz, anything?
No, I just like the project a lot, and thankfully there's hoopla's.
Yes.
Do the residents get a discount on the Mediterranean deli?
Taking a movie?
Which is so good. I haven't had it yet. I've heard so many good things. I can't wait to try it.
My god, it's so good.
Okay. Entertained a motion from someone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the plan. My colleague Liz Brown and I were the reviewers on this project.
Okay.
And we both thought it was done very well.
Excellent.
Shall I present?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, we have reviewed this application for a special permit number 04-2024, and the applicant, 320 Main Street Bourne LLC, is proposing to construct seven townhouses on a now vacant parcel. The property is located at 320 Main Street in Buzzards Bay, and it is shown on assessor's map 20.3, parcel 135. The townhouse-style building is two stories with a footprint of 4,375 plus or minus square feet, containing seven dwelling units. Each unit is two stories with two bedroom and two bathrooms. The project is determined to be in allowed use within the downtown district under Section 1230, Site Plan Review, and Section 2800 Downtown District, all applicable sections. Mr. Chairman, based on the planning board's review of the exhibits, testimony of the applicant, experts, witnesses, and the record of the proceedings, the planning board has found that the project is consistent with the Town of Bourne zoning bylaw, 1230 Site Plan Review, 2800 Downtown District, all applicable sections, and 3100 Lowell and Regulations. Therefore, I move to approve Site Plan Review Special Permit 04-2024, because the project has met or exceeded the special permit criteria of Section 2827 and the following. One, to grant a special permit for the following. Section 2820 and Table DTD-1 for townhouse residences. Section 2830 and Table DTD-2 for base residential density of one unit per 2,865 square feet of lot area. See Section 28. C, Section 2840 Performance and Functional Standards. D, Section 3100 Lowland Regulations. Conditions. This permit is subject to all rules, regulations, and bylaws of the Town of Bourne. Two, the project is approved for one townhouse building with a total of seven residential units. Three, any change to the composition of the number of bedrooms must be reviewed by the planning board before being implemented on-site. Four, Mass DOT curb cut and utility permit is required for any work with the state highway layout. Five, coordination with Fire Department, Engineering Department, and 911 Coordinator from Bourne PD as to the numbering and/or lettering of the building to assist with 911 emergencies. Fire and life safety systems must meet the requirements of the building code. Six, prior to the issuance of a building permit, submit an emergency access plan confirming that the project meets the requirements of Chapter 18 of the Comprehensive Fire Code 527 CMR. Seven, at least one Knox box will be required for the property. Eight, the building will need to be protected with an automatic sprinkler system. Nine, the building code requires emergency responder radio coverage in all new buildings in accordance with the building code and NFPA 72. Testing will be required to confirm that acceptable coverage exists. If coverage does not exist, a system will be required and documentation will be required confirming the system provides adequate coverage. Ten, defer to Conservation Department for final determination of compliance. Eleven, adequacy of sufficient sewerage to be deferred to the Town Administrator's Office Sewer Commissioners. Twelve, defer to the Buzzards Bay Water District for adequacy of service. Thirteen, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, an as-bill plan must be submitted to the planning board showing all appurtenances above and below ground. Fourteen, conditions approved by the Design Review Committee dated 4/30/24. Fifteen, this decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, Land Court Registry, and a copy returned to the Planning Department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Sixteen, submittal of the operating and maintenance agreement signed by the owner of record. Shall we add a handicap parking spot at the parking area of the seven townhouses?
On that number that you just read, number 16, submittal of the operating and maintenance agreement, you're talking about the stormwater, correct? You might just want to add the word stormwater in there.
Good idea.
We'll add four stormwater.
The only thing I don't see in there is about the affordability of the units. At what point do we want that to be done?
Chairman?
Yep, go ahead.
These, because it's under the 10 units for this parcel, these seven units do not have to be affordable. That's for 340, the back.
But aren't both parcels, that parcel cannot operate without the big parcel?
Right, with the driveways and everything, so that would be.
So they really have to be joined to be able to operate. Because if you didn't have those two parcels together, there's no way that they're going to be able to build that parcel. So I would say that the total units of both sites should be counted for the affordability.
Okay.
So that would make it 30.
37.
37 units, so.
But it's, yeah.
So you'd need four affordable units instead of three.
Well, I think the next step, we will probably be submitting an A and R to the planning board to merge the two properties together to take the common lot line, so.
And we're going to have to amend the original project.
So you put a condition on the original project for the affordability? Sorry, I didn't.
Yeah. That's the motion, including the addition, the handicap spots.
Yes, it is.
And affordability to four. Okay, do we hear a second on that?
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any further comments, questions from the board, from the audience? Okay, roll call vote, Corinne?
Yes.
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 Liz?
Yes.
Thank you. And share votes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, we look forward to seeing.
Thank you, you'll be seeing us again, I'm sure.
I'm sure, but the town, like everybody, everybody in the state, the town needs more rental units. So this is going to be.
This is a nice set of drawings.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Compliment, one of the professionalism.
Yeah, very nice.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else before the board? Entertainer motion to adjourn?
So moved, Alan.
Second?
Second.
Second. Call those in favor, oh, roll call, Corinne?
Yes, yes.
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 Yes, Liz?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. We are adjourned, thank you, folks.
Thank you.